Okay, good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Rutland Town's Select Board for Thursday, September 21st, 2023. It is 5:30 PM. There are three items on the agenda. The primary one is to visit with the owners of the Cortina Inn, and they are here this evening. The second is to discuss approving a builder's risk policy for our public safety building. The policy is not yet ready for signature, so we'll... Don't yawn, Keith. This is important stuff. We'll take it up at our Tuesday meeting, because we should have the policy to approve then, I hope. And then see any other business. Select Board member Sharon Russell will not be with us tonight. She is undergoing a medical procedure and is unavailable. So, let's get started. There is also one other thing under "Other Business", and I'll start with that, just to ask if you folks want me to do it. There are two documents that need to be signed, that authorized by the board, need to be signed, so that we can apply for grants for the MS4 watershed improvement work, stormwater mitigation. Do you want to?
So I'd authorize the Board Chair to sign on behalf of the town for these two grants in the two places as needed.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to authorize me to sign on behalf of the board. This is to approve and to go for the grant. Okay, discussion. Yes?
Couple of questions on the questionnaire.
Yep, Bill's the one who filled it out.
So, Bill, question seven, B and C. What is this single audit referred to? It seems to be a defined term, but not on this document.
If we spend more than $750,000, or when we spend more than $750,000, we'll be subject to a single audit. We haven't done that yet, so we haven't gone through it yet.
That's a federal funding requirement?
Yeah.
So that'd be... That's a specialty, different from our standard audit?
We would know it if it happened.
We've been cautioned, like when we got the ARPA funds, to be very careful not to spend any of those in any particular year. That was prior to us declaring them as replacing lost revenue. So, it's hit, you know, it's... We've been reminded not to do this, or not to trigger it, I guess.
You spend $750,000, they want to know where it goes.
And in detail.
Yeah. All right. So then, I did not have a chance to look at this other one. What is... Tell us what this is.
Oh, it's a certification that we're in good standing, that we're not named in any admin order or consent decree, or we're not in violation of water quality standards. And I think, you know, we go in applying for a grant with clean hands. I think that's the intent. And then the certification for grants is the attachment page. If you're not comfortable doing it tonight, we can put it on the agenda, or we can do it under "Other" on Tuesday.
I'm good.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone... I'll say aye, too. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Yeah.
Maybe it doesn't matter.
Okay, Bill, those are here, so... And thanks for indulging us and letting us get that little piece of business done. So, we're meeting with the Cortina Inn representatives, and we... Anil Satchdev sent through to all members a proposal. It's in four parts, okay? The first is that the Cortina will pay the sum of, and that's blank or Xed out, and an amount discussed during the meeting. That payment would be every month to support Rutland Town for additional emergency services that may be used due to the influx in voucher program. The second item, that the Cortina will continue to pay the amount until the Cortina's participation in the state program comes to an end. Third item, we would like the Rutland Town's Select Board to cease all Act 250, change applications and filings. The Cortina Inn is a hotel, and whenever this program does come to an end, our plan is to renovate the hotel, as discussed, after the end of the state program. And the fourth item, Hotel will try to keep all their exterior doors closed, and will come up with one entry system, and will try to install an alarm system if any door remains open. Okay, so, those are the elements. I think for our purposes, we are missing a Select Board member tonight, and...
How is she doing, by the way?
She's... She was home, and she will be back home. This was a, you know, just a day trip in, or... Yeah, so it's... Thank you for asking. But something she had to attend to, so... And we will need to consult with, obviously, any... Anything that we negotiate needs to go through our attorney, and I suspect would go through your attorney. Even though a couple of us are attorneys, we don't act in that capacity. When we're here, we act as Select Board members, so... Okay, so we'd like to hear a little bit more from you, and then I think we have some questions.
Of course. So, we never had intention of revoking... Sorry. We had never had intention of revoking the original agreement, but the original agreement was with the old company. So, we never had a, like I said, we wanted, we want to continue funding the Rutland Town for all the services they do provide. Officer Dumas is always there. He's always helping out. He's always taking care of a lot of the things, especially at night, especially during the day, so we understand. The fire department's there. The emergency services are always there. So we never had any intention of not paying you guys. That was never, that was never a discussion. It was more the fact that we have to, we wanted to negotiate the rate because of... We just acquired the property. It's not, it was not full and clear. We required the property to be run as a hotel. Yes, the voucher program is still going on, but we would still like to speak to you guys regarding a rate.
The rate?
The conversation towards the end.
All right, and that's the first item there?
First item.
Okay.
And that will continue as long as the program runs.
Okay, so we're picking up somebody on the... JP, could you mute Pete, please? Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, we will continue to pay as per the agreement, moving forward until the program does come to an end. Regarding the third, we don't want this to be an issue, because we understand that you guys believe that we're running it as a shelter. It is and always has been a hotel. That has always been our intention. We bought the place as a hotel. We will keep it as a hotel and renovate it as a hotel. That was always the intention. That will always be what it is. And regarding the security doors, the exterior, the one-way entry system, we're going to try a way of making the exits one-way, where they, if they do leave the exit, they'll have to come through the front. That way, we can kind of patrol.
So you can't come in through, unless somebody opens the door?
Unless someone opens the door. And then what we're going to try to do is reactivate all of the alarms, the ones that weren't working there. So, as a hotel, there were multiple key card access points. So, what we'll try to do is we'll just try to disable those, if that's what the town wants for now. That way, the only entry point would be through the front.
Okay.
Anyone with a key card can get in. So what we'll do is we'll just make sure everyone come through the front.
Okay.
And what our plan was, I think what JP was speaking about last time, was that the back doors are open. What we'll do is, we were gonna, we spoke to our security company. They're gonna try to have someone positioned where that entry point is, because that is a way of multiple entries. There's just two doors in the back that he was referring to. So, if any car or anyone does come in that area, we'll definitely have a clear view of who's there, so we'll have a better way of controlling that area.
So you'll have cameras and monitors?
Yes.
And the monitors, there'll be someone at the front desk or monitor point?
Yeah. Front desk and the, you know, the point where the security guard will be sitting.
Where?
That is the back door.
Okay.
Because the back door was the point of contention.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're definitely working on that.
Okay, well, good. Thank you. I think the chief said he was down there today. The fence is up and completed. All right, thank you. And the doors were...
One door last night was locked.
Okay, okay, so...
Check all of them.
Getting there. Questions? Now?
So, we've had some reporting about the transfer of the property between the two entities, and I think there was some discussion about that at the site visit. I just want to make sure that we're clear on who has authority to speak for the companies, how they're related, and so forth. I think the report in the paper was that Mr. Satchdev's daughter was one of the owners. Drew, I understand you're one of the owners, and then I'm wondering who Mr. Patel is?
He's a silent partner. He's just not really involved in the operations.
Is he a majority owner?
Uh, I believe so, yeah.
Has he ever visited the property?
A few times. He's come here.
Okay. Can you describe the relationship between ARD Realty LLC and ARD Hospitality Management, Inc.?
I don't know. I can't comment at this current moment.
So there's not like a management agreement that you know of between the two?
Not that I know of. Not at the current moment.
Art, is it your intention that... It's another entity. Yeah, is Hospitality Management of Rutland, Inc. involved at all in the Cortina?
That was the old ownership.
Last week?
Exactly.
If you ask me, I can answer.
Yes, please, go ahead.
No.
Okay, so are you aware, it appears that the name Cortina Inn is still owned by that entity, and it's not owned by any currently involved entity?
It's a legal issue. I have no answer about that. Yeah, we did sell the property, which will be the hospitality management, with the DBA, which was Cortina Inn. Cortina Inn is a DBA.
Right.
Like, so, when it was sold, I think it was sold with the, with the name of the Cortina Inn.
Okay, it may have been, but right now...
All right, yeah. The lawyer...
Yours is still owned by you, as far as the public can tell.
Oh, okay. We'll clear that up. That's a, that's a point of concern.
That might be possible, yes.
It shouldn't be. Yeah, we'll definitely clear that up.
Yeah, I was the one who incorporated the Cortina Inn.
So, it's difficult to tell from the information that's publicly available how these entities precisely are owned and managed. But with respect to ARD, I believe the manager... Well, Drew, I think you're one of the managers now, and perhaps Mr. Patel is also a manager. I'm assuming...
I'll get more clarity on that. I don't have anything to say at the moment.
I think ultimately, what we'll need to know is who has authority to sign an agreement. Do we need signatures from both of you, one of you?
Okay, no problem.
It's not clear from...
I'll definitely get that cleared up.
With regard to the Cortina Inn, you know, normally when you sell the hotel, you know, you sell the DBA along with that, you know?
Right.
And the phone numbers and the website.
That's what I would have expected, because this was an asset sale.
Yeah, it was an asset sale.
But maybe there's just some follow-through that's missing, but right now, there's a disconnect.
We'll definitely address that.
Anything else?
That's it.
Joe?
So, how are you, how are the rooms, each individual room where the, where the folks at your housing stay? Are those rooms still locked as they would be for a, when you would run it as a motel? So each family or each group in there has their own key card. Their rooms are locked. In, in a normal hotel setting, those key cards would allow you to use entry, like the side door that used to face toward Hampton Inn. You could get in that way and stuff like that. So is all of that stuff still in place, or?
Yes.
You know? So, somebody without a key card
Couldn't get in.
Shouldn't be able to get in those. And the back doors that have been ones that the PD and our health officer have noticed that were open or unlocked, those are the doors that we're talking about as far as the monitoring and, you know, if those are just reestablished as emergency exits only, with, you know, that'll, that's what we discussed, you know, last week about, and getting somebody in to do that. I mean, if you... It sounds like you're trying to get it so all of the folks staying there have to go in and out of the front of the building. That, that way, you would be able to monitor, you know?
The traffic going in and...
Yeah, who's going in, who's, you know, what's going on, because the undesirable elements that seem to frequent your place of business probably are causing you more problems than you're aware of, and Ed's probably well aware of those problems, so, you know? That's one thing. The, last week, after you guys left, the lady was here, and she represents certain agencies, and they work, she said she's working with people with disabilities there and, and stuff like that, and she made it sound like the board is not homeless-friendly, like we're against, we're, we're trying to get these homeless people thrown out of there because we don't... And, and that is not the board's position, and so, to that point, whatever we agree upon between you and us, our, our intent here is to make sure those people are housed safely, taken care of properly, and the resources they need. Most homeless shelters are a stepping stone to somewhere else. You guys don't have any real control over that. That's the, the state has to come up with that plan. And I understand that you're kind of caught in the middle. This is an opportunity for you to do business on a probably little better level than you would actually do if you were running a motel. You, you wouldn't have 130, 40 rooms rented every night. We, we both know that. And the state is paying a fairly fair price per room. I understand that taking advantage of that is financially beneficial to you. The concern I have is that the well-being of these folks is kind of getting left to the wayside tonight. And so, as a board, I think we are trying to look out for their best interest, and that's why we've been asking for these things, the additional funds to help with security, help with the PD to do that. And to that end, do you guys have any... I don't know if it's up to you, the state, or whoever, to get more people involved with who's there to help them move out of this. This cannot be a permanent lifestyle for these folks. I know the state, I think, was kind of caught off guard with a, with this homeless thing, and, and they're kind of throwing money at a problem. There, there isn't any solution that I see in sight. And unfortunately, being good businesspeople, you're taking advantage of a situation that's pretty financially interesting, you know, affordable and to your benefit. So I don't know. How do you guys interact with the state? How do you get additional people in there to help these people with whatever services they need to look for permanent housing? Is, is there any of that going on, or, or is it just kind of...
First of all, you know, I will thank, you know, the board, you know, for whatever support they have given us, you know, from the beginning. It is not that, you know, you are against the homeless people. Yeah, your input always helps us to prepare ourselves for more better. Like last time, you know, we were discussing about the fans and everything. Yes, the fans will make a big impact, you know, for the neighbor and for the people jumping and going to the plaza and everything. So your input is always helpful for us to, you know, go into the better direction. And we were not, you know, we were a hotel. Our main job was to give the hospitality to the people, not to do this business, you know?
Right.
But we are, we are, we are also in the same boat right now, so yes, your support is there. And moving into the, the part about the state help. State used to send the people to the property, and they used to help the people for all the needs, you know, like housing need, you know? Filling the application for them, getting all the, you know, you know, application lineup for whatever the needs are, like if they need any eyeglasses or any food or any kind of stuff. They used to come and they used to give the service, but I think, according to what I came to know, they have outsourced that department to someone. Now, what they did, you know, they came to the property and they took all the intake from everybody, all the details and everything, and now they sit at the office and try to find the housing for them. And talking about the other services, you know, which is, you know, if people need a special service, you know, they do come to the hotel. And I think this is the only property in the, you know, Rutland City and the town, where people could come and sit over there in the banquet hall and do all their services, what they need to do it. Other than the other hotels, you know, they don't have space to even sit over there. So, we do give their services, and you know, if you, we can do some more also by calling some other authorities, you know, and they can help us to, you know, help these people out, you know? We can do that.
Because, you know, now that you have become shepherds of the homeless, I guess you've taken on some responsibility. And at the last meeting, Sharon, that's not here, Sharon ran the outdoor mission for like 40 years. And so she has a real good idea how things go. You guys have been in the hotel business for your life. That's, this has been your work. So, you're, you're in a situation that you're probably not familiar with and may not quite know what's needed, and you need to, you know, I know that, I think we all know that the motel room, hotel room, is not really the best living situation for families. You know, it's, it's basically a bed and a bathroom, and, and that's what they are. You know, the other things that a normal apartment would have are not there. And I think everybody is trying to solve this problem in a manner that's, I, I don't know, it's, it's not adequate, but it's okay, you know? You're trying to keep people that they're, they're not out on the street, and they got a roof over their head, and it's warm, and they got a place to go. But the other stuff of normal life, I, I can't imagine parents bringing kids up in this environment, you know, where everybody is kind of together like that, you know? So, I, I don't expect you guys to come up with the answers, but I, I think that the state has got to, and maybe you people need to push them a little bit and say, hey, you know, this can't go on forever, you know? One of the things you mentioned, Drew, was about renovating and eventually getting back into the hotel business, but you have no idea when that's going to happen, because as long as there's a need for the homeless and the state's willing to pay what they're doing, you'd be foolish not to take the money and, and keep doing what you're doing. I mean, it's, it's, it's making you a living. It's allowing you to put some money aside, I'm sure, because we can all do the math. We know what you got for rooms. We know what the state's paying per room, so we all know what you're making per month, per day, however you want to look at it. I'm wondering if there's a point where you might just say, okay, enough's enough, and, and we want to go back to what we were doing, or, or not? I mean, I...
Well, let me, let me follow up on that, because I noticed that there is no date here.
It's kind of open-ended.
Yeah.
Because we don't know.
Right.
If we had any, any sort of clue when the state program is scheduled to end. That was the reason why I said last week, I think it was April 2024.
Right.
That was a tentative day. I don't know.
Would you be willing to set a date irrespective of what the state of Vermont does with this program?
We also would need to know where to, where all these, because any time that we move someone, the first question they ask is, is there a place that you can put them? Because we, we can talk to other hotels. The other hotels don't have a place to put them. So we ask other, other jurisdictions to see if they can find someone. We had a, a family that came from us, from Burlington, and we couldn't even move them anywhere, anywhere near Burlington. So they stayed with us for a week, and then we kept contacting their caseworker to see if we can move them somewhere else. So it's been a challenge just to have one family move.
But why is that your responsibility, I guess, is also my question?
Because we, we took, they also had a, it was a language barrier as well.
Okay.
So we were trying, because it was a two-on-one call where we took them in, and they, it was an emergency transfer. I forgot what reason it was. Yeah, it was an emergency for them. So we took them in, and then we were just trying to help them find somewhere else. I mean, we were helping them. We weren't actually fully in charge of it. We were just trying to help them out with the moving.
So if you said to the state, we're done, as of April, whatever the date is, what, have you had those discussions with the state?
No.
It appears other motel owners have.
But they have, they don't have the capacity that we do. So if you see some of the other hotels, they might have 30, 40, 50 rooms. It's easier to displace 50 families than 150 families, because they still have to go somewhere else.
Well, but you're taking on that responsibility, which is actually the state's responsibility. I guess I'm wondering if you said to the state, as a businessperson, it's time for us to switch back. We're going to start renovating. We need to have all of these folks rehoused. Have you had that conversation with the state?
We didn't have a conversation. We didn't get, never get a chance to speak like that.
Who's... Okay. Who, who do you connect with? Who's the state person that you connect with?
It's by the name Mark Elie.
Mark?
Elie. Mark Elie.
How's that spelled?
R-K-M-A-R-T-E-L-E-Y.
And what agency is he with?
With Human Resources, I think.
Agency of...
Children and... Children and... DCF. DCF.
DCF, okay. And does DCF come and inspect the premises at all?
No, they sell the health department from the state.
But they are. Thanks.
Yeah, so, I mean, as, as we know, when we did the, the visit down there, we didn't see inside any rooms. And I'm wondering when DCF or the health department comes down, do they go into the rooms? Do they look at the rooms?
They keep, I think, six months back, you know, and yeah, at that time, you know, all the rooms were open for them, you know, because they gave the notice that, you know, we're going to come on this date, and we have to put the notice for the guests that we are coming in, you know?
Okay. And that was six months ago was the last time they looked inside any rooms?
Inside the rooms, yeah.
Six months ago.
Pretty irresponsible.
Okay. Your restaurant is not operating there. So, do people who are housed there have the ability to cook in their rooms?
They get the food from the food bank.
We have a small fridge and freezer if they have any frozen stuff they want to hold. And I believe, uh, which company is it? They deliver food every Thursday. Meals on Wheels. They do, they do have meals coming in.
Is there a microwave? Do they have the, in each room?
Microwave and a fridge in each room.
Okay.
And not the best environment.
Hot plates? Now, you're saying no, and perhaps you don't provide them, but do you know that those things aren't in every room? Have you...
We do check it, you know, and if we find, we take them away.
Yeah, we do confiscate it, because it's not allowed.
And how many hot plates or things like that have you confiscated?
15, 20 in the last one year, yeah.
Anything visible, we usually confiscate it. If it's hidden, then it's kind of hard for us to kind of determine.
So, that brings up the question, how do these people survive three meals a day? With, you guys can't possibly feed them, because that would be another whole
Yeah.
science on itself. I, I wonder how some 200 people find somewhere to go to eat three times a day? That, that's something that nobody's ever even addressed.
I know.
Because you got, a normal hotel isn't even set up for that. You have a restaurant, but probably a fraction of your patrons that are there would actually eat at your establishment. You know, you couldn't possibly feed 200 people, 250 people, three times a day. So that's, that's an interesting question. That's something we need to ask somebody else.
Matt?
You indicated at the beginning that you wanted to negotiate the rate.
Right.
Are you ready today to propose a number?
Well, I thought you, we wanted to leave for Sharon to be yours.
Well, we want to hear your number. We're not going to make a decision today, but we want to hear your number and the logic behind it. Okay.
Our range was between 15 and 17,000. Our, our range was between fifteen and seventeen thousand.
I'm sorry, between fifteen and seventeen?
Thousand.
Uh, per.
Per month.
Per month.
As per the agreement you guys had originally.
Um, but.
That would be until the program comes to an end.
But we were being paid twenty-two thousand five hundred a month. And why have you, why is your proposal less than that?
Cause we, like I said, the previous owners had a well-free and clear property. They don't have the expenses, the mortgage, all that stuff to take into consideration. We understand that it's, it's less than what you guys were getting before. We still definitely wanna put our part in to help the town, help the police department, help the fire department in any way that we can.
So let me turn to our police chief and, and see if you've started crunching some numbers on. Your ability to serve, continue to serve as you have been and whether you need additional resources down there or fewer resources down there, what's your. What's your take on that?
To do it properly, I mean, we could use three more officers. We have longer covered hours and we have the bodies to deal with the issues that come up.
And it, it, what are the numbers like down there for your responses to that end of town and in that area?
August, ninety-one percent of our calls came from that section of town, the south end. Retail thefts or stolen vehicles or whatever happens, it's off. We take the southern end of town. When has taken and, uh, put it into a form, if you will, and she keeps track of where our calls start from. Always, the majority of them come from that area down there. Today was the first day I went and looked at the new police fire building where they pour things down, it's the first. Yeah, I took the time to do it, cause I'm usually down at the south end.
Okay, so what, what does it cost to? You know, to, for, to hire an officer, all of the salary benefits, the full package plus, you know.
Roughly a hundred thousand dollars per hour.
And can we fine three officers?
No, that'd be hard. Maybe if we. If you could, uh, match prices with, uh, what the B S P is getting and what's the other agencies are planning on upping their. Officer salaries to, maybe, I don't know.
And then we'd have to up everybody else's on the police force too.
At money, six hundred thousand increase.
Or the whole department or just for these three?
For the whole.
Okay, well, let's take one piece at a time, um. Ninety-one percent of the calls. Um, any change in that number since there's been a change in ownership at the Cortina?
The fluctuates, could be the weather, I don't know.
Okay.
More than, more than eighty percent of our calls come from the south.
Okay, on average, more than eighty percent. So a decrease payment from the Cortina per month. Wouldn't, would that cover what you're providing for services down there now, let alone the increase that you're looking for?
I have the bodies, I can spend it, but I got my bodies.
Okay, all right, and let's see, the school resource officer, was she one of the folks patrolling during the summer down? Okay, she's now back up at school, I would guess.
Does, does she work any overtime, like in the evenings or no?
Sometimes.
Sometimes, the, the direct patrols that you do after their normal shifts. Yeah, and most of that was funded through the money that we were getting.
No, it was funded completely by.
By that, okay.
Do you, do you, do you know what that number specifically is just for the directed patrols that have been done? What the cost of that is?
We're paying them fifty-eight bucks an hour.
So over the course of the year, like, how many hours are we doing on directed patrols? I know we're killing your data here, but.
It sounds like one of those things we're gonna have to get in more information on.
And ten hours per officer. Per week. Forty hours a week. Or, or two week period.
Ten hours for a two-week period? I'm sorry, say that again.
Forty hours, you're so eighty hours a two-week period for all officers doing it, uh, at fifty bucks an hour. Times twenty-six would be what we're spending currently, roughly.
Times twenty-six?
Five or two weeks.
Oh. Gotcha.
Yeah, then times, times twenty-six, you have. Yeah, like a hundred and twenty thousand.
And that's for, that's at the rate of fifty-eight dollars an hour?
Right.
Okay.
That doesn't include any vehicle expenses either?
No, no, no gas, no, no another. Buy another seventy thousand per, per fuel, maintenance on the cars.
Seven zero, seventy?
Cars, uh, another, I'm just thinking fuel, maintenance, that there another, between seven, ten thousands a year for that. Sit there and idle most of the time.
So seven to ten thousand a year or a month? For the, a year.
About a thousand dollars a month, eight, eight to thousand a month, it would be an average, yeah.
Okay.
Work more, it's, it costs more, but less a costless.
Yeah, now that's assuming that. Do, do you have any more capacity within your existing police force to? Spend more hours down there?
You gotta be careful.
Families and things they wanna do, they don't wanna just.
So the time they spend there now, is that voluntary, right?
Right.
So if J P wants to go work a couple of nights or Mike or Ted or Jimmy or.
Try to coordinate this once a week, multiple people down there.
Yeah.
If you have more people, you can kinda branch out, be a little more proactive in the area, but do, rather than just doing reactive patrol, you could do proactive patrol. And actually go up there and look for things that are, look like trouble and it's usually not too hard to find them. And if you do that, it seems like things seem to calm down for a few days, cause they know we're out there looking.
At the, um. I was figuring the, the previous rate that the, um, Cortina was paying us. We could possibly fund two officers.
Yes.
On that, um.
Maybe we could possibly pick up some part-timers and do a lot more hours.
What do you, so what do you think the possibility would be of? Hiring, you know, I know you've kinda answered it, but if we could find. Two full-time officers that would like to join your four. Um, and then of course, one of the things that would do would allow you to patrol some of the rest of the town.
Right.
Um, so. What's the likelihood we, in, say, the next three months, we could hire two people?
I could probably get some level two people, which means they haven't gone to the full-time academy.
Right.
Put them in the academy, start in January, runs at least one of them through.
Yeah.
Maybe stagger them, have the next one in August or June when they go through, to get that person to stop.
Would a level two officer be sufficient for what you need there or?
As Jimmy or B S P would have to step in, if they picked up a felony case to process, one of us, we'd have to be available to them at that point.
They can't really function on their own, it's, in, you know, it's not a single resource until they go through the whole gamut and they have to be what, level four? Three.
So you had some information, let's see, I think at the last meeting we were talking about. There, there's another piece in this that because now it's gone longer and that is the. Impact on our school system, um, because we have children who are there. And you're estimating, what, twenty-four children? Do you know how many?
We, I think it was twenty-four to twenty-five children.
Twenty-four to twenty-five children.
Hundred percent sure, cause the town still calls us regarding certain kids. They're trying to contact their parents to see why they haven't enrolled in school, so we don't know the exact number, but I think it's around twenty-four, twenty-five children.
So you're, you're paid by the room, as I understand it, not by the number of occupants in the room? Okay. Um, so I think our information from the school, Ed, you can correct me if I'm wrong, was that. Ten students from Cortina attend Rutland Town School and. Three to four attend some high school and of course there's school choice, so we don't necessarily know which high school they're attending. Where are the rest? Are they all younger kids?
Younger kids, some of them go to schools. I think outside of the jurisdiction, from what I remember, they're not, they don't go to school in Rutland, cause they were from a different area. So, yeah, either they're in Rutland Town or Rutland City or in a different jurisdiction completely. From what I know.
Yeah, and, and there's no park down there, there's no playground area, there really isn't facility for kids.
We have a couple basketball courts in the back and they have a little area in the back to play, but not much.
The center lawn, you know, near the pool, you know, they, they play over there.
There's a patio and then there's a, there's a courtyard area where they can play as well, inside of the, inside of the hotel, but it's, um. So our building is kind of an L shape and the other wing is here. So inside of that is an area where like there's grass and people can sit outside and have a barbecue if they want.
Right, do you provide supervision or you leave that to the parents?
To the parents.
The parents.
And you know, it's covered by the building on the full side, so you can't go out.
Yeah. Um.
But normally the parents are always with the children, there are moments where they're not, but that's.
Well, I noticed the signs that were on a number of door, room doors down there reminding parents not to leave their children unattended. So that tells me perhaps there was a problem with that.
There was one of the family, you know, where the kids were, uh, found alone, you know, so we put the note on every door, you know, just to stop that.
And then kids like to run around, um, unsupervised, they just like to go around the building. So we do tell the parents, you guys need to do a better job with managing your children, so far they've been doing a better job with that.
We also had some vandalism issues from the teenagers that were. Remount Plaza, our Remount Plaza people had to go clean it up and all that stuff, they, they get a reimbursement.
And I remember it was vandalism that caused the shutdown of the, the laundry rooms or a couple of the rooms that when we were there that day. Because they weren't, yes, they weren't operating. Um, okay, does that, Matt?
Circling back to my earlier line of questioning on, um. It's just such a, uh, the previous owner was Tulsi Rudraksha Hospitality LLC, correct? And that was your business, um, did you have partners in that business? Uh, was Mr. Patel a partner in that business? But there were other partners?
Kurt, we haven't heard from you, you have questions?
No, I think my biggest question is how long it's, how long is it gonna go on and we've already discussed that, we know there's. No end.
I wanna thank you for, I know that, I think you were handling a fire in, uh, Clarendon, if I'm not mistaken, yeah. I can't imagine how much you have to do. Yeah, we, we have, we generally have, we honestly have no idea. We're trying our best and we do have people that actually do find housing and we're grateful, so we do kinda have them, see if they can gain contact with someone else. See if they can kinda connect that way, so if they know someone that has housing and they wanna move, then we'll try our best to help them out.
So you, your position is you're going to provide housing for the homeless as long as there's a need?
As long as the state requires us to, yeah, or not requires us to, would like us to help them out, yeah.
The, um, one of the, um, in your email, you had mentioned about. If we could have negotiated something here as a group and then we would maybe withdraw from the Act two fifty proceedings. Um, the line of questioning regarding the school, um, I'm not as versed in this as Mary is. But the Act two fifty does allow a town to ask for impact fees and so there's a concern there. To the school, we don't have anybody here from the school, so we can't speak from the school, but as a board member and I think the rest feel the same, that we are. Kind of charged with looking out for the financial well-being of the town taxpayers in general and that would include school taxes. And that's why we bring this up, um, it's something that's gonna need to be considered is that. Going forward, there, there may be, um, some reimbursement that's going to be needed to, to go to the school. Because this situation is bringing additional children into the area that we're having to educate. Um, the state has a number of, as to what it costs per student, I don't know that number right off the top of my head. But I'll guarantee it's gonna be quite a bit, it's probably as much as what Drew was proposing per month for the police. For, per one child, per child, so this is, um, would have to be something that if. Us as a group were to come up with a, an agreement with you folks and withdraw from that Act two fifty, this is something that's gonna have to be. Be addressed because through that legal process, the town would be allowed to ask you guys for some compensation for the school. As well as for the municipal side and I wanted you to be aware, I don't want you to be blindsided by that, maybe you already know, I, I'm assuming. That you have somebody working with you on the two fifty stuff that knows it and, and that is something that would be out there, so, um. Those are some other considerations that, that we would have to come up with and the other consideration. And I guess it's hindsight, but. Whatever we come up with, it would be my intent that this would run with the facility and not with the ownership. We, it is, it's kind of interesting because two weeks. Prior to the sale of the property from you to your son-in-law and the others, um, we had discussed as a board whether or not we should. Add that to the, um, to the, the D some way so that that original agreement would go with the building and the property. And we never really came to, so that's something that we might want.
Yeah, do, do clear that up.
We are, we are not related.
I, I met him first time, I think, uh, in the month of July.
July.
I have never met him before.
Okay.
It was during the sale, uh, when he came to see the property with his father.
Okay.
And the other partner, that is the first time I met him.
Okay.
All right, so then I stand, I stand corrected, you know, we have, we have been told that. So, so those are some things that are out there, um, that probably will need to be addressed as we move forward. And I, and I want you to be aware, I don't want you guys, I don't like the board would ever blindside you with something, say, oh no, you gotta do this, so just, that's. That's something.
All right, any other questions from select board members? Um, any other comments or things that you want us to consider? It was helpful to have your, your template here. Um. And we will obviously discuss things with our missing select board member, we will be in contact with our. Town attorney and we will be back in touch with you folks, all right, okay, anything further?
I wonder if J P is on, I don't know if he had any.
I.
Or from that as the health officer, if he's okay or.
Well, let me just ask, J P, do you have any, um, specific questions? That's really, we, we don't wanna engage in a debate, we're just wondering if you have questions. Or, um, anything you wish to put to the, uh, Cortina N folks?
I, I'd like to know if they have a policy on drugs, do they allow drug use and drug selling in their facility?
Absolutely not, we've already initiated, uh, several evictions on certain people. Um, few people are leaving tomorrow, few people are leaving in a couple of days, but there's a list of people that we've already started removing. We already contacted Economic Services and told them that they're no longer allowed on the property.
So when you do that, is Economic Services responsive?
Uh, they just tell us that we'll, we'll do that and they'll, they'll take their name off of the Cortina N list. And where they go afterwards is, we have no idea. And where they go afterwards is, we have no idea.
Okay, so they do have a process for doing that?
Yes, I know so.
Can, could you just, either of you describe that process, um, because these vouchers are I guess renewable, but short term, right? So if you're evicting somebody, how long does that take? I mean, are they out at the end of the voucher?
Yeah, we have to give them a, you know, some, some notice, you know, in advance that, you know, we won't, we are not going to renew the voucher for this particular person. So if the person have a voucher left for fourteen days or six days or four days, they will try to find the new home for him.
Have you had people squatting there after the end of the voucher that you can't remove?
We do, but we have a security guard, you know, and they help us out, you know.
The Stockton folks? So they're paid by the state, right? They have a contract with the state. It's not an expense you folks bear.
No.
Okay. Yep, go ahead, J P.
I visited the facility this afternoon. I found the back doors open, unlocked, and people loitering all around. I was approached by two residents, family men, uh, and they told me that they've reported directly to folks at the front desk, the names and room numbers, there are people who are dealing drugs down there and that management does not a victim until their voucher expires. And that's really unacceptable, because it's poisoning our community. All the other hotels, when they enforce their rules against drugs, don't see the type of crime we're having to respond to. When they don't enforce the rules against drugs, this is what we get. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do you have written policy that you give to each person? Could we get copies of that?
Of course. Definitely, we, I'm fully made you.
Okay, cause we have, we have, we have heard about these and you've offered them before, and I think it would be good to actually have them in hand. Okay. All right, if there is nothing further, I, uh, thank you for coming in and, um, we'll need to deliberate and then we will be back in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, so the other items on the agenda, we had I think we've dealt with mostly by saying the builder's risk policy is not yet ready and in hand, and hopefully will be by Tuesday. And thank you for doing the M S for, um, stormwater grant pieces that we need to get in. Okay.
Discuss anymore, or do you wanna just sit on this, or?
Um, do, are you, are you?
Well, I don't know, we're, we're here, and I didn't know if you, and I don't know if our discussion would be warranted to do that in executive session, or.
Since it's kind of contract negotiations, I would suggest that would be appropriate if.
Um, I, I mean, if, if Kurt and Matt and you don't mind staying for a little, I don't wanna stay till midnight.
Good.
We, we killed an hour and ten minutes last time, or an hour and fifteen minutes in executive session, but I, I do think it's important, while stuff is still on the table, that we, we talk about it and then we can share this with Sharon as it's so I, I would make a motion that we have a short executive session to discuss this a little bit.
Should we include Ed?
Ed, absolutely, yep.
I'll second that then.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion. All in favor of executive session, including our police chief, for the purposes of discussing this contract proposal, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.
Any motion?
I do.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made to adjourn and second it. All in favor, please say aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.